So, hi, everyone. Having the hour of four o'clock come, I'm gonna call the Cook County Commission on Social Innovation Meeting to Order. I am going to read the message in regards to executive orders and virtual meetings. In compliance with the Governor's Executive Order 2020-7, 2020-10, and 2020-18, attendance at this meeting will be by remote means only. Instructions for how to attend this meeting and participate in written public comment will be provided on the Cook County Legistar webpage at cookcounty.legistar.com prior to August 27, 2020. The proceedings will be available to be viewed at our Cook County Commission Facebook page starting today at 4:00 p.m. Read comments of any of these items listed on the agendas are accepted at seventhdistrict.office@gmail.com until 24 hours prior to this meeting. Read comments provided up to 24 hours prior to the meeting will be read aloud or summarized at the meeting. Three minutes per comment will be allowed through every, and every effort will be made to read all statements in their entirety. Copies of the agenda and items to be considered at the meeting are made available electronically on the Cook County website at HTTPS semicolon, four slash four slash cookcounty.legistar.com. Please note that the Cook County Building located at 118 North Clark Street, Chicago Illinois 60602, has been reopened with restrictions to the public until the date that will be determined due to the current circumstances concerning COVID-19. Please, can somebody from staff take role?
Yes, Commissioner Anna Wajardo.
And please, if you're present, unmute yourself for attendance.
Commissioner Anna Wajardo. Commissioner Carrie Thomas. Commissioner Carrie Thomas.
I'm here, sorry, couldn't figure out the mute.
So Commissioner Anna Wajardo is present. Commissioner Carrie Thomas is absent. Commissioner Kristen Freeman?
Present.
Commissioner Harold Rice?
Present.
Commissioner Harry Alston? Commissioner Harry Alston is absent. Commissioner Howard Mills?
Howard Mills is here.
Commissioner Howard Mills is present. Commissioner John Yonin?
Yonin is here.
Commissioner Christie DiLaurentis?
Present.
Vice Chair Mark Lane? Vice Chair Mark Lane is absent. Commissioner Morgan Malone? Commissioner Morgan Malone? Commissioner Wendy Raymer? Commissioner Wendy Raymer is absent. Commissioner Solchiu Espinoza? Commissioner Solchiu Espinoza is absent. Commissioner Solchiu Flores? Commissioner Solchiu Flores is absent. Commissioner Roger Cooley?
Present.
Commissioner Jerry Aglopay?
Here.
Commissioner Sol Anderson? Commissioner Sol Anderson is absent. Commissioner Patrick Brutus? Commissioner Patrick Brutus is absent. Commissioner Karen Norington Reeves?
Here.
Commissioner Alderwoman Maria Hadden? Alderwoman Maria Hadden is absent. And Chairwoman Alma Anaya is present. Chairperson, you do not have a quorum at this time.
Thank you. Because we do not have a quorum, we will not approve the minutes as of yet. We'll wait to see if some of the other members could join us. In the meantime, is there any public testimony that has been submitted to our office?
No, we did not receive public testimony.
Thank you. Um, we are, because we cannot approve the minutes as of 4:13, we are going to go into updates from my office. So I'm gonna go through a few updates that I wanted to make sure that the commission was aware of, and then we will go into the presentation. We will come back to any of our votes if we meet quorum. So again, I want to make sure that I thank you all for joining this meeting and also those of you who were able to join our last commission meeting last month. We know we had some technical difficulties with some members, but I think we were able to mostly everybody join the conversation. And I'm also very glad that we are able now to continue to have regular meetings of the commission. We know we have a lot of work ahead of us in many different areas. So I'm excited that we're gonna be able to continue the work that we had planned for 2020. And obviously with new work and new priorities due to COVID. But this is, I'm excited that we're continuing our meetings. I did wanna, I did have a few updates. The first update that I wanted to report on is a few commission members met earlier this month to discuss the worker co-ops. This was something that was discussed at our last meeting. This meeting came out of our July meeting and discussion to be able to brainstorm on how worker co-ops can be supported in accessing any type of government funding or any type of resources and assistance. The group identified short-term and long-term goals to be able to help a worker co-ops, which will be including, which includes community education and awareness of the current resources. The group will continue ongoing conversations in regards to this. We're very excited. This was a little bit of a spin-off, right? We didn't, it wasn't sent to a specific committee because we knew a lot of members were interested in having this discussion. If anybody else, any other commission members would like to participate or add anything to the conversation, please reach out to our office and see, and we can see how we can incorporate you into the conversation. The second update is that we will be having a region of the, we'll be having a hearing in which the Regional Transportation Authority, or RTA, will be coming before the board in September. And this is specifically to address COVID physical impact. And they will be presenting on this during the briefings in June. And I know some of you were able to participate in those briefings. It was mentioned by our superintendent, John Yonin, about the significant impact of the public transportation or the public transit futures and the sustainability. We thought it was an extremely valid point and something we wanted to uplift. We've been very excited that the Department of Transportation and Highways, along with the President's Office and some other individuals, were able to get RTA to do a presentation. This is gonna really help us set the tone, particularly because transit, public transit is an area that we've been very interested in as a commission, but something that is directly tied to equity, which we continue to uplift at the county. So we're really excited to see, have this hearing, to be able to support RTA and the members and be able to continue to figure out what we can do as a commission. Superintendent John Yonin, did you have anything to add in regards to this? I know that this was, it's a current project that you're working on right now.
Yeah, so Madam Chair, thank you for that. And just the fact that, again, thank you to your leadership because obviously you sit on a board where a lot of the questions, you know, are being asked, but there is just very little bit of information that's being disseminated out there. So your call for there to be a hearing in that transportation committee would not have taken place if it wasn't for you stepping up and really putting this on the radar. Because again, information's out there that transit's down, but, but who's being impacted? As you mentioned, just how on the equity side of things, how there's a whole new look at those kind of job, you know, opportunities, where they're at. And there's going to be a lot of good conversation that's going to be had. So definitely, again, thank you that that was gonna be part of some of my committee, you know, update reports. But one other little thing to add is that the Racial Equity Week that the President and the Cook County Board is going to be hosting, an opportunity to have a discussion on how equity and transit and our, you know, fair transit pilot is really during this time critical because of the momentum that has been lost with the jobs and those who use transit to get to those places. And so there's gonna be some things happening in mid-December. That's gonna be a little bit before this committee vote, this committee rather, meeting, where we're going to have the service boards present. So, you know, we'll have some of those dates and then advertise them, obviously, through the Board of Commissioners' schedule. So that's really about the only update. And then I could give a little more update later on if time permits.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I wasn't sure if there was anything I missed. I believe Commissioner Jerry Aglopay asked, when is Racial Equity Week? That's gonna be the week of September 14. So we'll have some additional information on that towards the end of our presentation. So, again, thank you Superintendent Yonin for that update. The other update that I wanted to make sure, there's a few announcements that I had. We understand due to COVID, there were quite a few times that we had to shift our previously scheduled social innovation meetings. Some were canceled indefinitely, and others were moved around to accommodate for other meetings. So I wanted to present and propose the remainder of the meetings for the year. And I wanted to make sure that this was put in place because some of the committees were asked, were asking for us to have solidified dates so that they can also be able to meet on those dates. So as of now, we have September 17 as our meeting in September, October 15, November 12, and December 10. Now, November 12 and December 10 are the second Thursdays of the month, and that's due to holidays and other board meeting schedules. So we wanted, those are a little bit earlier on. I know typically we meet either, we started meeting the fourth Thursday of each month, and then we had to move it up to the third. So I wanted to put these out there for any type of reaction from any of the commission members, if anybody, if everybody's okay with that so that we could approve officially the changes in these dates. I'll open it up for a few comments. I could repeat those dates again, and I'll put them on the chat. September 17, October 15, November 12, and December 10. If anybody has any comments, feel free to unmute yourself and make those comments now.
Commissioner, it's Christie DiLaurentis with Sussa Bourbon Mayors and Managers. We have our standing board meetings for our municipal members on the third Thursday of the month. So there's a couple conflicts, there's always been a couple conflicts. It's a little, it's actually a little bit easier now that we're on Zoom, where there's not travel involved. But we also have, on a couple schedules, we've got earlier meetings in the afternoon because we do back-to-back so that the mayors are in one place at one time. So for what it's worth, I may or may not be able to attend, but I could send potentially a staff person to participate in the meetings.
Okay, thank you, thank you for your feedback on those dates. Anybody else have any feels, any certain way about those proposed dates? Okay, so what we'll do on our end, again, I'll put these in the chat. You know, I'll, we can discuss this at the end of the meeting as well. And I'll also give, give you all this through email, obviously, in our minutes. So if there is any, any particular conflicts or any, anything that you'd like to highlight, feel free to email Yesenia or Victoria from my office and state those on there, on your email. The other thing that I wanted to, other announcement, we are currently adding a members page to our social innovation website. We know that this has been a project that has been on and off, particularly just due to COVID. We wanted to make sure that we give you a heads-up because you all should keep an eye out for any additional instructions from our office. We are gonna be sending out an updated directory just because some people have maybe changed positions or titles or have new information. I know that we talked about this at our last meeting. So we will be sending that out. So we're gonna be reaching out to, again, confirm any contact information once we receive it, and then we'll, we'll make sure that, that we send that out to everybody so you all have that directory available to you all. The other thing is, I wanted to circle back with some of you all. I know we had some new members this year, just to remind you all in regards to the Training for the Open Meetings Act, or OMA. If you haven't received your certificate or haven't sent it to our office, we're gonna be circling back. And feel free to reach out to us if you need further instructions on how to take that training. The final two announcements that I had on my end are with two members that unfortunately are not present just yet. But we wanted to congratulate Commissioner Morgan Malone on her work. She actually just was highlighted in Forbes Magazine earlier this week. She started a nation, the nationwide initiative called Resisting in Police. And this initiative is, is to amplify the additional methods used to further the movement for Black Lives Matter. So we wanted to congratulate her. So if you do get a chance to see her, feel free to do that. Sol Anderson, who is another of our commissioners, actually will be leaving LIFT, which is LIFT Chicago, which is the organization that he is currently in. But he will be receiving, he will be having a new title. He's gonna be an executive director to an organization. I don't know if it's public yet, but I would just wanted to make sure that as soon as we get, we may, we get that public on which organization he's gonna be leading, we'll make sure to send it to you all. But just wanted to highlight some of the achievements from, from you all. And I'm gonna actually now, that was it for me. So I'm gonna turn it over to another of our commission members, Karen Norington Reeves, who is gonna be giving us a presentation, particularly around the partnership that they've created with contact tracing programs. So as we continue to navigate this pandemic, we know that contact tracing is gonna play a very important role in the response to containing the spread of COVID in different communities. So we're gonna welcome Commissioner Karen, Karen Norington Reeves, who is the executive officer of the Chicago Cook Workforce Partnership, to walk us through the presentation on contact, on the contact tracing programs in the city of Chicago.
Commissioner, I apologize for the interruption, but you do have quorum now. Commissioner Alston joined a little while ago.
Thank you for the update. So if that's the case, let's take up the mode, let's take up a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting of July 30. I'll entertain a motion, does anybody wanna make that motion?
So moved.
Okay. And is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rice. All those in favor signify by saying.
Commissioner, it's Howard Mills. I have one change that we should make, which is in the first line, where it says, "Welcome," it says to the, I think, December, I'm trying to remember. It says, "August 30th, August 30th," it should have been July 30th.
Thank you for pointing that out, we'll amend it on its face, any other corrections? Okay, not hearing any other corrections. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, minutes are passed. Thank you so much, Howard, for that correction, we'll update it on our end. Okay, thank you Karen for your patience, for joining us. I'm gonna turn it over to you. I know that Victoria has a presentation, so she'll pull it right up.
So, good afternoon, everyone. I hope everybody's doing well. I am going to walk you through the efforts of the Chicago COVID Contact Tracing Corps. I'll also give you a little overview of what we'll be doing with respect to Cook County as well and answer any questions that you all might have. As you may be aware, the Chicago Cook Workforce Partnership is the public workforce system for the city of Chicago. And with our recent award of the contract to manage the COVID Contact Tracing Corps for the city of Chicago, it's really now a marriage of the public health system and the public workforce system. So I'm gonna walk you through an overview of the Contact Tracing Corps and Resource Coordination Hub. I'll explain to you the work that we'll be doing with respect to the community and answer any questions that you might have. So with that, Victoria, can you advance, please?
Apologies, one second, please.
No worries, no worries. So just for, by way of background, as everyone is well aware, the pandemic is gripping the country, but also gripping our region. This data is a little bit outdated, but what we know is that the pandemic is disproportionately impacting African-American and Latinx communities. We will be forwarding a copy of the presentation. I believe it actually might have already gone out to everybody. It's attached to your meeting minutes from the last meeting, but this was sent out earlier today, if I remember correctly. And so what we're seeing is a disproportionate impact in African-American and Latinx communities. And a lot of this has to do with many of our community members serving in essential worker roles. And so what we see is that we are in these service-oriented roles. We're in roles that are more public faith, we have greater contact, greater frequency of contact with, with the public. And then we're getting infected and bringing it home. And unfortunately, in many of these roles, they are low wage and then you're less likely to have insurance coverage and more likely to also then have comorbidities and then, and then not get the type of healthcare that's needed and often resulting in death. And so what I can tell you is that today, we're seeing even higher impact in Latinx communities within the city of Chicago. Next slide. So back in, towards the end of June, the middle of June, rather, the city of Chicago released an RFP seeking to identify a lead coordinating organization. And the partnership was awarded the contract towards the end of June. And we are, we feel that we're a natural fit for this work. As you all know, we operate the public workforce system, and we are the largest such workforce development system in the nation. We placed, we've placed more than 70,000 people in employment since our launch, and we manage federal and philanthropic funds as well as partnering with employers. Within Cook County, our services are available at more than 72 different locations. And we are already focusing on the communities that are the ones with high economic challenges, high economic hardship that were identified by the Chicago Department of Public Health as the communities that they wanted to focus on. Next slide. So an overview of this initiative. Pursuant to the Chicago Department of Public Health, there is a need to create not only a contact tracing corps, but also a resource coordination hub. And the purpose here is to focus on identifying and funding community-based organizations within the high economic impact communities and then hiring contact tracers from those communities through those CBOs in order to connect with community, to have that level of familiarity and to be able to connect people to the resources that they need in order to keep themselves and their families safe. Next slide. So this project actually, while our aspect of the work began in June, really beginning as early as March, the city's Department of Public Health already had contact tracers in place and were already reaching out to try and identify folks who had contracted COVID-19 as well as the people with whom they've been in contact. And so we are really into sort of the next phase of that work. The first part for us was identifying community-based organizations. So pursuant to the CDPH guidelines, we are to identify 30 community-based organizations that correspond with 30 target areas, which I'll identify in just a few moments. And what we did was we focused on pulling those organizations from our existing network first because we needed to stand up this program pretty quickly. We already have an existing network of more than 50 community-based organizations, and those organizations were already located in many of the high-needs communities. So we did a bifurcated RFP process. We identified 10 community-based organizations that were already within the public workforce system. And now, as of last Friday, we actually just closed the RFP for the second round of community-based organizations, the second and final round. And so from the current pool of proposals that we've received, we actually have received, I believe, 79 proposals from community-based organizations throughout the region. We will identify 20 of those and form a core of 30 community-based organizations that will actually directly hire the contact tracers. Next. So the partnership will serve as the lead coordinating organization. However, we have a number of partners who will support us in this work. So advance to the next slide, and I'll walk through them in detail. Thank you. So partners that we brought into this process, we realized that we couldn't do this work all on our own. Clearly, our focus is around workforce development and career pathways and helping people get placed into employment and following them for retention. But we needed other partners to help do the heavy lifting of this work. And so UIC School of Public Health is a core partner. They will be focusing on helping to onboard the community-based organizations and also to support the training and hiring of the Contact Tracing Corps. Additionally, they will support us in the professional development and earn and learn aspect of this initiative, which I'll articulate in a few moments. We also partnered with Malcolm X College, one of the city colleges of Chicago. Malcolm X, as you know, is the healthcare-focused community college within the city of Chicago. And they've got a state-of-the-art training facility, newly-created building. And they also have created a 12-hour online community contact tracing credentialing program, utilizing their certificate program. And they will also support the professional development and earn and learn initiative. utilizing their certificate program, and they will also support the professional development and earn and learn initiative. Sinai Urban Health Institute, or SUHI as it's affectionately known, will support the onboarding and training of the community-based organizations. Sinai Urban Health has phenomenal track record of doing work with respect to community healthcare workers and articulating the career pathway and the advancement for those folks who come in as community-based healthcare workers to actually move on and advance into other careers within allied health occupations. And so they are one of our strong partners as well, and they will also assist with respect to the professional development and resources. And then finally, NORC at University of Chicago. NORC is our partner for a number of reasons. First and foremost, they actually have the contact tracing contracts for the state of Maryland and the state of Delaware. So they've got significant experience in this space. They are tried-and-true researchers, and they have done pioneering work with respect to medical research and policy. And so they will actually operate the Resource Coordination Hub, and they will hire those coordinators and supervisors. Next. So as I mentioned, there are two components to this work. So the first is the Contact Tracing Corps, and I'll talk about that now. Next slide. The Contact Tracing Corps, as I mentioned, will consist of contact tracers and community-based organizations. So there's 30 CBOs. Each of the CBOs will hire contact tracers, as well as supervisors. There will be a total of 450 contact tracers and 30 supervisors. And then these supervisors and tracers will also participate in an earn-and-learn initiative to help them get exposure, career exposure, to the allied health occupations, and to also prepare them to, for permanent employment. Really, this core constitutes a transitional job. This job will last anywhere from 10 to 22 months, depending on the nature and the arc of this virus, as well as the community need. And our expectation is that we don't want these to be solely short-term, dead-end jobs. We want this to create further economic development within the community. We want this to create further opportunity for the individuals to participate. And for that reason, we're focused on this earn-and-learn aspect. Next slide. So the CBOs will be selected in accordance with the following principles. First and foremost, they have to be located in or primarily serve residents within the high economic hardship community areas that you'll see on the next slide. We also want to focus on those individuals who have been disproportionately impacted by COVID-19. So individuals who are currently unemployed, who may be returning from incarceration, individuals who might have barriers to employment. And we also want those community-based organizations to have a sense of being part of a larger initiative. So they need to be able to collaborate and coordinate with the other organizations that are going to be a part of this project. And they also have to have the ability to reach and serve residents within the communities that are of most importance here. Next. On this slide, you can see the target communities. So as I mentioned, the CBOs have to be focused here. In addition to the high economic hardship community areas, which are delineated in the dark purple and then also spelled out in the two columns there, Auburn Gresham and South Shore are also the focus of the city, because they are part of the Invest Southwest Initiative from the mayor's Department of Planning and Development. Next slide. This is an overview of the funding. So this is a two-year contract. The initial year and period of performance is from July 1st of 2020 through June 30th of next year, with $40 million being focused on the program. The majority of the funding here, 85% of the funds, go to the wages for the contact tracers, the supervisors, as well as the resource coordinators and their supervisors. There is a second-year extension available for $16 million for a term not to exceed 12 months, which would take the entire initiative through June of 2022. Next slide. Thank you. So this is just a breakdown of the funding. So of the $40 million in the first year, $29 million will flow through the partnership. $25 million of that is going to the community-based organizations to cover their administrative costs, as well as the wages for the tracers and the supervisors. And so the tracers earn a wage of $20 an hour, and the supervisors are hired at a wage of $24 an hour. And so this is just further articulating the bifurcated procurement process, so rounds one and rounds two of the RFP. The other portion of funding on the Contact Tracing Corps will be flowing through to the project partners for their various roles with respect to the training, the certification, the professional development, and support for the community-based organizations. Next slide. So the second part of this initiative is the Resource Coordination Hub. Next. The Resource Coordination Hub is going to be both a physical and a virtual space. So in addition to the contact tracing, it's very important that we're able to refer individuals who have been diagnosed or individuals who have had sustained contact with individuals who are diagnosed with COVID-19, to refer them to testing and for treatment, as well as any sort of social service needs that they might have. So for those individuals who are food, housing, or employment insecure, they would be connected to the hosts of services available through that Resource Coordination Hub. The hub will be staffed by 90 coordinators, as well as 10 supervising resource coordinators. And they also will have the opportunity to take advantage of the earn-and-learn initiatives. Next slide. The next slide just gives a breakdown of the distribution of funds here. Again, the dollars flow through the partnership to the project partners. NORC receiving an alliance share of those dollars, as they will be using those funds again for the for the wages for the coordinators, as well as the supervisors. Next. So professional development and earn and learn. What exactly is this? So first and foremost, we've got to prepare the contact tracers to do this work. They have to understand solid customer service. They've got to have solid skills to allow them to interact with individuals with whom they will be calling. They are going to be calling people, sharing news that someone may have been in contact with someone infected with COVID-19. This is not going to be an easy thing to do. Those are not easy conversations to have. And they've got to be well-prepared to address any of the concerns or questions that might arise during those conversations. So there is a fair amount of training that will go into this role. In addition to that, as I mentioned before, we want to make sure that folks are prepared for longer-term employment within the allied health occupations. And so towards that end, we will have, at six-week intervals, professional development sessions. We will do refresher training. We will also focus on trauma-informed service delivery and self-care for those individuals who are contacting people and hearing very difficult and challenging stories about what's happening in folks' lives as they're trying to connect them to services. We also want to focus on epidemiology and other healthcare-related matters. With respect to earn and learn, we at the partnership have set aside some of our federal funding that will help to cover the cost of actual occupational training towards credentials within allied health occupations. So we will develop manuals around career guidance. We will also develop a menu of in-demand careers within this region, based on local labor market information. We will also be able to articulate career pathways for individuals, so that they can see where the entry point is, but then what the advancement looks like. We will be wrapping in supportive services, and then we will offer permanent job placement in the healthcare or adjacent fields upon conclusion of their term in the Corps. And then finally, through our federal dollars, we're also able to support individuals with retention services to make sure that not only do they get placed in permanent employment, but that they're able to actually retain those jobs. Next. So where we are now, we're here in August. We have already procured 10 CBOs, and they are actually in the process of doing their hiring. We expect them to have their, have their numbers met by the end of next week, the beginning of the following, at the latest. We then are also in the process of procuring the remaining 20 CBOs. And as soon as they are identified, then they will begin their process of hiring the balance of the contact tracers. And then we will begin to stand up the Resource Coordination Hub. And then beginning in October, we will start with the refresher courses, as well as the professional development, the ongoing professional development. Next. So in addition to the work with the city's Department of Public Health, we'll be working with two other departments within the county. One, the Bureau of Economic Development, and the other, the Cook County Department of Public Health. So let me talk a few moments about the Department of Public Health. I don't have a slide prepared on that, because we are still in the process of negotiating a memorandum of understanding. But essentially, the earn-and-learn aspect of the Chicago Contact Tracing Corps that we're doing, we will also be mirroring that with respect to Cook County. So offering access to the Federal Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act funding, offering access to occupational training, offering access to more permanent job placement, as well as career pathway information. With respect to the Bureau of Economic Development, I believe at our last meeting, Commissioner Soshi Flores talked a bit about the work of the Bureau of Economic Development and the $82 million in CARES Act funding that was provided to the county. As she lifted up in that meeting, $4 million of those dollars will flow through to the partnership for a number of purposes. One, to focus on training funds for employers and individuals for direct training, transitional jobs, incumbent worker training, and all the supportive services that flow through that work, as well as some program management, administrative costs, and reports, and other deliverables that we will have to provide. And then funding for our American Job Centers in order to hire additional staff to meet these overwhelming needs, given the volume of individuals who are laid off. We also are part of what's called the Rapid Response Teams for the state. And at the beginning of the pandemic, while we got a lot of permanent layoff notices, we also received temporary or just furloughed notices. And those temporary notices are beginning to convert to permanent, permanent terminations. And so by staffing up our American Job Centers and building out their capacity, it will give us greater ability to serve the individuals who are, who find themselves unemployed right now. And then finally, we'll be working on a pilot project around the manufacturing sector, working on an early warning system to help avert layoffs that are triggered by COVID-19. That means we will be able to get in and help to fashion some solutions to prevent those firms from having to shut down prayerfully. So with that, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that folks have right now.
Thank you. So I do just want to take a second to add Commissioner Patrick Brutus and Commissioner Sol Anderson to the role. I know that they joined us a little after the presentation, so I wanted to make sure that we took note of that. And I'm opening it up for any questions. Is there anybody that had any particular questions in regards to the presentation?
It's Howard. I wanted to just compliment the importance and great work that we've just seen. The fact that it was put together in response to an emergency, Karen, you know, amazing. And I sympathize a lot with how difficult this is, because recently, in an effort to get some funding for the contact tracers with respect to their telecom equipment, one firm had a fund that was for first responders. I thought I made a great Perry Mason moment when I argued that, in fact, the contact tracers are going to be our first responders in so many ways. Different phase of this pandemic is certainly to put out a fire where it begins. And I truly believe that this work will pay enormous dividends. And of course, as you can imagine, I was not successful in arguing at this time, to this point, that our contact tracers are, in many ways, the new type of first responder.
Thank you, Howard. This has been a huge lift for our organization. We're up for the challenge. Now the harder work begins, which is really addressing those calls and making sure that our trainers, our tracers have all the skills that they need and that they're properly trained in order to address the great needs. You know, as you all know, our COVID-19 numbers are growing within the city of Chicago, and specifically within the Latinx community. We are making sure that we will have bilingual, monolingual, multilingual contact tracers as well in order to address the needs of the various communities that we'll be serving. Thank you.
I want to, hi, Commissioner, Madam Chair. This is Patrick Brutus. Commissioner Norton Reeves, I want to congratulate you on the successful bid to get this project from the city. And I think it's just amazing that, you know, your, your, your office, the organization you run, has the capacity to meet the needs of the city and the county at large. And I think this is a great opportunity for you to continue to demonstrate your leadership. And I wanted to say this is an awesome thing for the commission here to have this resource available to us, to provide us with the information on, on an ongoing basis in real time, so that we can respond to, you know, the people that we know, love, that we're sheltered in with in our communities, but especially for you, Commissioner Nia, for the district that you serve, you are able to provide your constituents with the information right here, because it's at your disposal. And that's all because Karen and her ability to, one, respond to the challenge, to, you know, respond to this RFP, and, two, for the county to actually win this bid. I think it's amazing. I look forward to hearing more about it while I am sheltered in with my family here. But certainly, I know that the Cook Workforce Partnership is going to do great things. They've chosen great partners. I'm biased toward the SUHI, because my wife used to work at Sinai. And I know the quality of the people that work over there, and I know that on the West Side, they'll be doing their best efforts to, you know, mitigate this situation and, and, you know, actually, you know, perform well in the contact tracing. They have a great labor force on the West Side, and I hope to hear more about, you know, the initiative, the results, and hopefully, you know, the successful slowing of the spread here in the county of Cook. I just wanted to share that with Karen, who is a friend of mine, and I'm happy to, to see Susan Massel on here as well. Great addition to your team, Karen, and congratulations to everyone.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate that vote of confidence. We live up to it. Thank you.
Hi, Commissioner Norrington Reeves. This is Commissioner Freeman. Hi, I just want to echo everything that was previously said. I am tremendously excited about hearing the plans, especially the Resource Coordination Hub. So I think that's going to be really, really important, to make sure that information that's constantly being updated is getting out to the neighborhoods within a timely manner, because that's part of the issue with this, right? It's rapidly changing information, and what was the case yesterday may not be the case today. What I do want to ask about is the potential connection to the city of Chicago's Department of Planning and Development. So I heard you mention the coordination between the agencies, but they were not a division that was mentioned, at least either them or Business Affairs and Consumer Protection, so that the information is getting into the hands of business owners. I unfortunately know a few business owners that have passed away from COVID. My brother was impacted by COVID, and it's just even some of the worker policies that folks don't know about. And so I'm not sure where some of that information will come in at. But ensuring that from a business owner's perspective, you as the business owner, what you are responsible to do, and having this information also available for your staff. But as these things are changing, be it the regulations around opening, or even what your response should be if your staff gets COVID, or someone in your workforce does get COVID. or even what your response should be if your staff gets COVID or someone in your workforce does get COVID.
Yeah, so the, the part of the work that has been contracted to us is specifically focused on the community contact tracing efforts. The piece around business, around congregate living settings, all of that is being managed by CDPH itself. And so they are actually continuing to staff up a whole division of their organization that will focus on, on those pieces. So that will not be managed. This, the purpose of this particular work is around the community facing effort, meaning the residential, the residential piece. But that business facing work is being done and will be managed by CDPH in coordination with the other departments.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Can I, can I also address that? Sorry to cut you off, Commissioner Jerry. So I think that's astute to, to bring in that component to the equation, Kristen, and to ask Commissioner Norton Reeves about that, that aspect. And as a DPD employee who, who works in the Invest Southwest Initiative, I know that during your presentation, you mentioned the Auburn Gresham community. And I know that originally Karen was part of the citywide task force when we started putting together some of the blueprint of how the Invest Southwest was going to, one, function, but also the launch efforts and all the inter-agency coordination. And so if, if appropriate, I would love to invite you to a future Community Roundtable meeting that we have on a monthly basis. So, you know, you could share, you know, some of the contact tracing goals and objectives that you are now leading with the community at large, just, you know, as another layer of what we're doing to provide real-time, you know, initiative, objective setting to the community at large. And so I could talk to you offline about that if, if you want. We could, you know, explore.
Yes, thank you. I'm happy to do that. We will be doing more and more community. Done a number of panels or briefing sessions for various electeds and their communities. We have briefed all of the aldermen. We have briefed all of the county commissioners as well. So they are well aware of it and have been calling on us to come out. But Commissioner Brutus, I'm more than happy to talk more to, you know, community at large and help them understand the details of this initiative as we get everything stood up, especially once we get all 30 CBOs on board. I will say, and I'm sorry, there's one thing that was missing that I did not highlight within the presentation is that we set up a standalone website. It is shytracing.com, C-H-I-tracing.com. And you can go there to learn more information about the initiative. Individuals who are interested in serving as either resource coordinators or, or contact tracers can actually go there and just provide their information. We will share that with all of the CBOs once they're identified. So we'll look at people's zip codes and see where they're closest and refer them on to the CBOs for placement. And so you should just be aware of that. You're welcome to provide that, that website to anybody who has any questions or is interested in more information.
Thank you.
I wanted to, the point that Commissioner Freeman was asking about the small businesses. For us at Small Business Majority, we actually, Commissioner Norton Reeves is right. It's CDPH that we've been working with, liaising with BACP, with Kenya and Rosa and Edwin there at the staff. We held, you know, a session on navigating food and beverage businesses a couple of months ago during COVID-19. CDPH's hands, I mean, are full and they are expanding that capacity. We are probably going to be conducting more information because there was an enormous amount of people who weren't even in the city of Chicago that were interested in that training about what's happening with food and beverage businesses in the wake of COVID-19 for those small businesses. And I think Jaren from CDPH gave an excellent presentation with, with pictures on how you could even structure and physically alter your place of businesses and such. So I think that merits, again, us repeating that with BACP again and CDPH in terms of that contact tracing. We've also recently, last week, we held, and we're going to continue holding sessions with Chicago Committee Lawyers and Civil Rights, formerly the Law Project that they had there under them. It's still there. They just don't have that name anymore to really discuss, you know, what are some of the liability concerns that some of these small businesses have in regards to pandemic and COVID-19, among which, of course, there's that intersection with public health and the mask mandates now and the recent law that you can't assault a worker who, if you want to exercise your right not to wear masks, so to speak. So we will be, we were in discussions that last week, we were talking about mortgage and commercial rent abatement because it expired August 22nd, I believe, the moratorium. But we will be talking about those issues. We've been in discussion with them. So happy to share that with the Commissioner's Office and everyone here when we conduct those, those trainings again for individuals. And the last point I want to make, thank you so much, Commissioner Norton Reeves. I worked on workforce development for a number of years when I was actually in CC and actually managed the Public Health Training Center Network. And I saw the divestment in funds for the public health workforce literally decrease for in emergencies like this. They were ramped up for emergencies decreased over time because we became complacent as, as a government. We became complacent about investing in the workforce infrastructure. So I really appreciate how this is structured, where there is ongoing professional development and developing a pathway into actually strengthening the public health workforce in response for, we think it's for everyday emergen-, you know, for emergencies, heightened emergencies, but it's also for everyday public health prevention purposes as well. And so I applaud you for that, for creating and building up the public health workforce in the state of Chicago. There's been a divestment federally over the years and among the states as well. So this is an excellent direction into moving us into a workforce that is going to be creating decisions based on facts and uncertainty wherein businesses can rely on that information to operate with more certainty in the future. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you for getting it. Like, you know, that is exactly what we're trying to do is to help create a public health labor force for the city for now and beyond. And to make sure that we are partnering with those safety net institutions, that our safety net hospitals still need staff. They still need people to help support them. They're the ones that are drowning with respect to the cases that are coming within the community. And so we want to make sure that we're building up a broad variety of skills. Certainly, we, there are a lot of community healthcare workers. We've talked with a number of Latino-facing community groups around the promotoras that they utilize, which are community health workers who are Spanish-speaking community and really to serve as like navigators to help take some of the fear and some of the unknowns out of the way for folks so that we are eliminating these barriers so that folks can get the support and the services that they need and we can stem the, the transmission of this disease. We are full on in a community transmission space now. This is not coming from congregate living situations. It's not coming from schools. It's not coming from hotspots at offices. This is from families. This is from us being out and engaging in the community. And so if we can have a, a number of attacks on this disease, not only just attacking the disease itself, but then also educating our community members and then creating economic opportunity for folks, we will, we will win on all of those, those platforms. So thank you. I appreciate it.
And if I may add, I think that that's what's the most exciting piece of this is, is that workforce element and that infrastructure that is being created, Karen. Because I, I truly believe if we had that in place, it would definitely be, it would have been much easier the first round when the pandemic hit. And I think, given the fact that this is creating a pathway for job opportunities for community members who may have been impacted or community members that are unemployed at the moment due to the pandemic, it's also giving them a stepping stone to actually working in the field. And I think that that's for communities of color, for disinvested communities. And that is one of the most important pieces of this partnership. And why we're excited that you, that you all are leading this and, and working with so many different members and partners in this. So are there any final comments that anybody would like to include into our record? Or questions? Okay. Well, well, thank you so much, Karen, for presenting this. I'm sure that if anybody else does have any other questions, they'll, they'll be reaching out to you all. So thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Um, great. So Karen has included the, the website on the chat. Again, a reminder, it's shytracing.com, shytracing.com. So the, I think we're going to move on to committee reports. We know that some committees have been able to meet. My staff are going to be helping to provide, again, the proper notices with the county and assist with any technology needs. We want to ensure that the committees start meeting again. We know that it's, that's really where a lot of the work happens in our committees. Sometimes it's difficult to have action steps or, or, or meet during our regular meetings. And we know that the, the committees are extremely crucial to the work that, that we want to do as a commission. So, you know, obviously, we're going to continue to encourage committees to meet and we're going to be able to provide any type of assistance on our end to support you all with those meetings. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to go around and ask the chairs. If you've met, you can give us a quick update from the different committees, and then we'll move on to the next one. So I'm going to ask Social and Human Capital Committee Chair Roger Cooley, if he can give us a quick update.
Hello. So we have not met. And just started the conversation with Victoria and Yessenia last week about setting up, now that we've been able to move to the online meeting platform for the commission and for the committees. So looking forward to engaging with the committee members on, one, rescheduling our meeting times. We had met tied to the, to the commission meetings and now looking at opportu-, wondering about meeting on an off cycle, so we're not meeting in the same week to give a little more breathing room and space for the committee members. So it's not, they're not overwhelmed with the time commitment in one week. So looking at probably trying to find every, you know, every other week in between the commission and setting up the committee meetings. And we'll, as part of that process, we will need to revisit what our goals were in, especially in the light of, since we have not had any conversations since COVID has become a reality for the county. Really starting to look at what does that mean for redeveloping and incorporating a lot of the work that's already been done in response. So the work that Commissioner Norton Reeves was just highlighting, the work that Commissioner Aglape has been highlighting, the work that Commissioner Anderson was highlighting on the cash-based assistance work. So really looking at what are the, the full network of responses that fall within social and human capital that could then be looked at in a comprehensive manner. So not only as piecemeal projects, but how are they supplementing existing social safety nets? But also, you know, what's the full picture of the ones that are, you know, that are redressing COVID? And then even as like some of our conversations had been just before, was what would, you know, what would a comprehensive response look like to a recession? So really seeing what are the full pic-, what is the full picture of safety net programs to help bring people back to sustainable livelihoods and you know, making, meeting the ends meet and not needing extra support. But also what are the extra programs, the programs that do need to be in place now and looking more forward, you know, looking out into the future as well, and what is that full range of things? And I think I'm imagining those are our conversations and understanding then what are the pieces that are missing. There's a few folks from the committee on, and if anybody has any other feedback right now, if there's space for conversation. Commissioner Nia.
Sure. If there's anybody else I would like to add from the, that committee.
Um, I sit on a work group of a couple of electeds, advocacy groups, people in, in the Senate who are looking at paid family medical leave. And one of the, I just thought that, you know, that's something that, to be considered in turn, in light of recovery. We did have a bill that we wanted to have, had present to the General Assembly, and then COVID hit. One of the challenges now is we are going to be, we've decided, we just recently met, to use the next few months to educate people on the need for paid family medical leave insurance as the other states have, especially in light of disasters and emergencies such as the pandemic. The challenge of, of getting that through is, of course, we're looking at other, we're looking at, at other states that have the insurance programs like California and Oregon. I was just talking to my colleagues in California. There was a thinking that it may be insolvent because so many people would need to draw down upon paid family medical leave, including small business owners and their employees. It's actually not showing that in retrospect from the last few months. But for Illinois to pass such a legislation and to have a program that would support our communities and recovery in the long term is, there is a concern that because Illinois, the financial situation it was in prior to COVID, there's going to be even more of a need for the state to put funds upfront into a paid family medical leave insurance program. That money would be recouped, of course, because it would be paid back from employers and workers paying into the system. But, you know, it's, it's an issue to consider in terms of recovery, sustainable recovery for the longer term. And what do these policies look like for, for businesses and their workers as well? So I just wanted to, to share that with you because that was really, we, we had thought that we could have it introduced this past General Assembly session when COVID hit. So we are having to retool the way that we're approaching that particular program and how Illinois could be innovative and still have that and, and quite frankly, pay for it and have it be solvent in the first few years of its, of its institution.
Thank you so much for bringing that up. That's a very good point and something that we should definitely look into. So Chair Cooley, that, that might be another area that you would want to focus on. And I know that you're now still trying to formulate that. So as any other ideas come up, please feel free to send them to our office and then we'll be able to send them or forward them over to any of the chair individuals from the different committees. Chair Cooley, did you have anything to add in regards to your report?
No, not at this time unless there's any other committee members that have another, any other input or thoughts on potential projects or policy ideas that are really relevant and important right now that work on, you know, at Cook or state level.
Okay. I don't see anybody else. So if you do have any ideas, feel free to share them on the chat or again, sending them over to our office will work as well. Thank you, Chair Cooley. I know that Chair Malone is not at the meeting today, so we'll table any updates from the Intellectual Capital Committee. Chair Yonin, do you have any updates on the Public Capital Committee?
I do. So a couple of things. I've just been meeting individually with a few of the members to just kind of, we're getting some of the groundwork laid on some initiatives that obviously COVID has kind of hampered some of the ways that we've interacted in the various meetings. But one of the things that we did on August 3rd and is kind of But one of the things that we did on August 3rd and is kind of out there now in the public spaces that met with Commissioner Harris, Clayton Harris, who is not on the call today, but we did a taping on the opportunities to do business in the Illinois Port Authority. So for those that, you know, are here and we could maybe post on YouTube, if you go and you look under Transportation Tuesdays, it is an effort that we are looking at ways that some of our transportation investments are leveraging those kinds of community and economic development. And so there's a really neat video that Clayton and myself have done on that, that again, promotes some of the port operations and the things that are going on, some great things that are going on out there. Then the other thing that I'm scheduling with Commissioner Brutus is the, CDOT folks had gathered a number of projects from Southwest that, West, I'm sorry, Southwest, that are some streetscape desires that they have to try to advance as part of that program. And so we came up with a list and working with some of the Chicago commissioners to see if some of those projects can get realized, again, as part of our Invest in Cook program that, of course, Madam Chair, that you know so well from some of the investments you've made with the aldermanic menu programs that are on the west side and then a meeting tomorrow with Commissioner Johnson to be able to discuss some of those opportunities. And Patrick, I'll get back with you on some of those, you know, initiatives that we have as I gather some information from our Board of Commissioners. And that also includes some of the great work we're doing in the South Suburbs. And Christie, I know, again, as we're making more and more commissioners aware of the various suburbs that will be receiving some grant funds, it's just, again, a matter of me making sure that they're looped in on everything before we make announcements on some of the projects down there, where we want to make sure we look at opportunities to leverage some things within this group that you can bring some of your expertise on, so you'll also be hearing with me. So we'll set up these individual meetings and then get that meeting set where we can kind of, you know, brainstorm on some of these ideas. So that meeting has not been set, but I'll be reaching out to you on that. Madam Chair, as you mentioned, once we get the Transportation Committee date set with the service boards, we'll get that word out to everyone to be able to just kind of come out and attend. And I think that's going to also allow our committee to be able to leverage what maybe some next steps might be after that committee. So committee meeting. So that is really the update that I wanted to get out and, again, open it up to any committee members if they have more to add or questions for me.
So Madam Chair, if I could just add a couple of comments of some other things that I think we will be together with Cook County, the South Suburban Mayors and Managers, will be looking forward to working with Cook County in the days ahead. We, several of our municipalities, some advance, well, I shouldn't say advanced funding, but notice that they are going to receive one fast track grant from the state, Calumet City, for a very innovative project. And then related to that, we've been working with IDOT for a corridor study along, connecting three municipalities along a very busy, non-friendly corridor of Torrance Avenue in the South Suburbs of Calumet City, Lansing, and South Hallent. So those are projects that the county is well aware of and we're going to be working closely with them to make sure that the reasons are both improvements in terms of the corridor itself in the right of way, but transit friendly. Right now, there's a lot of bus activity, but people are standing without bus shelters or seats in very many, you know, in a lot of locations. So we really want to take kind of a humanistic and a community level approach, have much greater engagement than we have had in the past, and also connect, when we're thinking about the corridors, looking at other assets in the area, including the forest preserve system and trail system. So we're really thinking a lot more broadly about our corridors and what they mean to residents and other visitors to the community. So those are just a couple of things that are happening. And then another project, it's potentially getting underway in the city of Harvey. So a lot of hands-on activity is going to be in the South Suburbs in the next several months, and we'd love to come back and report and maybe bring those communities to this body to talk about what it means to them to have the improvements within their community get underway and come to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you for that update, Commissioner De Laurentiis. Okay, great. So what I'll ask is maybe Superintendent Yonin, if you can send that link to that video, we can send it also to all the commission members along with the minutes of this meeting, and we'll be able to do that if you don't mind. Perfect. The last committee is the Financial Capital Committee. I'm gonna, I know that Commissioner Raymer was not able to join us last second, but I know Co-chair Freeman had a few updates for us.
Yes, good afternoon. So we have not had a committee meeting, but we recently got together to kind of identify the areas that we should be looking to regroup around. And while we have not had a chance to discuss this with the whole committee, what we are thinking is just building off of the strategies that were identified in the Bureau of Economic Development's plan from our last meeting. So there were a few things that we looked at in regards to building the capacity of the agencies that are working with small businesses, as well as increasing the reach of the organizations in the South Suburbs. So those were two of the areas that we will be looking at bringing to the committee to figure out ways that we can really strengthen what our committee does specifically around assisting to ensure that there is some organization amongst the different departments and agencies so that we can try to support leveraging the resources that are coming both to the county and the city to support businesses from a financial perspective. Oh, and we're looking at Second Tuesdays for meetings, so I do have to take a look at those dates, but those were our previous standing meeting dates, Second Tuesday at 11:30.
Thank you. And Co-chair Freeman, if you need any assistance or any help on that, please feel free to reach out to us. We can help you with any of the, sending any of the notices out as well.
Will do.
Thank you. So with that said, I think, as I mentioned previously, we know that the real difficult but real important work that happens from this commission is typically in the committees. So we want to just make sure that we're supporting and that we are reminding everybody to attend your committee meetings. We'll be working with the chairs to set those dates. So you have, prior to the meetings, and then you have all of the information needed on our end. And then again, because we are working on the directory, just feel free to sending us your most updated information. You can add that also to the committee contact list spreadsheet. We're gonna send it out again as well on our end. Okay, so with that said, time check, it is 5:25. I'm gonna open it up for any new business or any announcements of any of the commission members, and then we will adjourn right after that. Is there anybody that would like to give an announcement or anything that we should be looking out for?
This is Commissioner Brutus. I wanted to announce, if it's not already known, that the city of Chicago has released three requests for proposals for economic development opportunities. One in Englewood, the second one in Austin, and the third one in the Auburn Gresham community. I will either send the link to Victoria, or I'll put it in the chat right now, so where they can go and register to get the copies of the RFP documents. But I think in these challenging times, the city is trying to, you know, stimulate the economy by putting out some opportunities for some development in these challenged neighborhoods. I just wanted to share that with the team here, and hopefully you all can spread the word, or if you're interested yourselves, respond, that'd be great. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Brutus. Anybody else? Any other announcements? Okay. It looks like we're set to go. So again, want to thank you all for your participation at this meeting. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn, Howard Mills.
Second from Yonin.
Second from Superintendent Yonin. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 The ayes have it, we are adjourned. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you.